Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good afternoon. I now call to order the joint meeting of the City Council and the Minnehaha County Commissioners on Tuesday, August 25th, 2020. Do a roll call for the city.
Could I get a roll call of the City Council, please?
Council members, Jensen.
Here.
Kylie.
Here.
Here.
Nitzer.
Here.
Selberg.
Here.
Sale.
Here.
Starr.
Brecky.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
We have a quorum?
All right. And I note that there's a quorum here on the county side, so I'd ask us all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask for a motion on the county side to approve the regular agenda.
Move to approve.
A motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega. Heiburger. Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Motion to approve the regular agenda from the City Council?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Sale, seconded by Selberg. Roll call vote, please.
Council members, Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie. Kylie. Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg. Sale.
Yes.
Starr. Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
The agenda is approved.
This is to Agenda Item One, which is a joint budget hearing for the Suland Heritage Museums. Bill Hoskins, good afternoon.
Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Bill Hoskins, Director of the Suland Heritage Museums. The Suland Heritage Museums is dedicated to the experience of learning for our community, its families and visitors through the collection, preservation, and interpretation of history. We operate three buildings: the Old Courthouse Museum, the Pettigrew-Homan Museum, and the Irene Hall Museum Resource Center. Museum visitation last year was about 75,000. We're running about 50% right now of where we were. Busiest days traditionally are Saturday, Friday, Thursday. The staff cares for over 120,000 artifacts that are catalogued. They range in size a great degree. We have some very large things, the Fawick Flyer, 1908 automobiles, one. Some things very small, less than the size of a dime. In a normal year, we do a lot of educational programming. Last year, about 606 or 616 programs for over 34,000 people. We also gave over 1,300 guided tours through the historic Pettigrew home. We have a number of exhibit galleries. We design, produce, and install all our own exhibitions. There are six gallery spaces at the Old Courthouse Museum, three at the Pettigrew-Homan Museum. They're designed to last 18 to 24 months. Our goal is really to produce and open a new exhibit every three months, four times a year, is our goal. We have so far this year opened two new exhibits at the Old Courthouse Museum. The Old Courthouse Museum is also host to a number of rentals per year. In 2019, that was 80 rentals. Rentals are something we account for, the revenue and expenses in the museum enterprise fund. This year, we're a little behind that ball at about 12, although the fall is looking up optimistically. All the expenses for those rentals are in the enterprise fund, and any overtime or part-time labor that comes out of operations is reimbursed by the enterprise fund. Helping us out in our operation are about 145 volunteers. Really, they help us do all kinds of things, from helping run the museum store to catalog artifacts and produce our exhibitions. They are truly priceless. We couldn't operate the organization without them. The Suland Heritage Museums were created in 1974 through a joint cooperative agreement between the City of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County. We have an 11-member board, five appointed by the city, five appointed by the county, and the 11th member is the president of the Suland Heritage Museums Alliance, a 501(c)(3) private nonprofit friends group. Article four of that joint cooperative agreement requires that the museum board shall prepare and recommend an annual budget to be presented to the city and the county, and here I am. That's what I'm here for today. The museum's budget is really six different budgets, each with its own road rules. I think of it as six parts. The biggest part is the museum's operations budget. That's about 76% of the whole. It's one of the four tax-based budgets. The museum operations, the Pettigrew-Homan Museum maintenance budget, the Old Courthouse Museum maintenance budget, and the Irene Hall Museum Resource Center maintenance budget are all tax-based budgets. We do have two revenue-based budgets, the museum enterprise fund and the museum store budget. The operations budget is funded jointly, 50/50, by the city and the county. It is adopted in this joint budget hearing. It is administered by Minnehaha County. At the end of the budget year, fiscal year, there's a reconciliation if there's anything left. It's split 50/50 between the city and county general fund. Our operations budget today is about 95% human resources. It's paying for the staff in large part. We have amounts that are used for postage. It's a negligible amount. I see on my chart it doesn't get to 0%. Telephone is really our network connection is what's going through there, connecting the Irene Hall Resource Center and the Pettigrew Home with the county network so we can communicate back and forth. We also have a small amount for marketing. The 2021 request really has no new staff requests, no changes in our part-time labor pool of ours. It does reflect a 2% increase to the county pay matrix and a 15% anticipated increase in the group health. The Pettigrew maintenance budget is a budget that is funded by the city. The city decides on it. The Pettigrew is owned by the City of Sioux Falls. For probably the last 15 years, Minnehaha County has administered that budget on an annual basis. The maintenance budgets, and they're all very similar, they include professional services such as the fire sprinkler guys who come and inspect it and the elevator maintenance and inspection professional services. Minor repairs, that's like earlier this spring, we had the front porch of the Pettigrew Home professionally painted. It's a minor repair that doesn't qualify for capital improvements. Utilities, probably one of the biggest part of all three of the maintenance budgets, and finally custodial supplies. We always do keep a small amount of money in all the maintenance budgets to fix the alarm systems should they go down because that's something that we want to keep and maintain active all the time. In 2021, we're asking for the same amount of money as in 2020 for the Pettigrew maintenance budget. The Old Courthouse Museum, similar to the Pettigrew-Homan Museum, except the Old Courthouse is owned by Minnehaha County. It's a budget that's funded strictly by the county. It's adopted by the county commission and administered by the county. Similar budget, some different terminology than the Pettigrew, but professional services, contract, it's the same thing. The elevator guy who comes and checks and makes sure the elevator, the fire sprinkler, minor repairs, custodian supplies and such, and utilities really make up the maintenance budget. 2021, we're essentially asking for the same budget as in 2020. The Irene Hall Museum Resource Center is similar and different. It has the same things, the contractual services for professionals to do things like the fire sprinkler. It has a small amount for repairs, custodial supplies. The bulk of it is utilities. Where it's really different is it's a budget that the city and the county decided to split 50/50. And in 2021, we're asking for a little bit declined budget there of 41,700. It probably could go lower. I just really need to get a second full year of utilities under my belt so I know where we're really going to be tracking with that budget. The museum special enterprise fund is a different animal. It's revenue-based. All the income that we spend is revenue generated by the museum. We generate that revenue in a number of ways. I talked to you a little bit about that a month ago. It is a budget, which is really the spending authority that you decide in this joint budget hearing. We spend our money, educational supplies for our programming, supplies and materials to produce new exhibitions at the Pettigrew and Old Courthouse, collection supplies and materials for the curation of the artifacts in our custody. We have some money for marketing, trying to move more into the enterprise fund as time goes on. Rentals, although rentals do generate quite a bit of income, there's also a cost of doing business with the rentals. That's accounted for here. Human resources, we have two full-time positions, the events coordinator and an exhibits assistant position where one-third of the hours plus the benefits are paid for by the enterprise fund. And money is reimbursed to the operations budget biweekly every time we get a pay. It also accounts for summer intern help, which we didn't do this year, but that's what we're hoping to do in the future. The big change in the enterprise fund is in the other category this year. We are seeking authorization to buy a new van, minivan for museum education should we be able to come up with the revenue to pay for it. And that's what we're hoping. Our 21 budget would be 231,486, and that's really a spending authority that you're giving us in that fund. Finally, I have the museum store budget. The store budget is to account for revenue and expenses associated with that retail store at the Old Courthouse Museum and allowing our visitor to take something home with them. The big significant changes, when you boil it down from 2020 to 21, are in the operations budget, that pay matrix increase of 2%. The county anticipated increase in the health, group health insurance of 15% and that budgeted money for a van maybe for museum education. When it really boils down to, this is probably the most important slide of all, we're asking for a total budget, all six parts of $1,660,937. How that works out, it would be a total city support of 692,881, 42%, and that represents the city's 50% of the operations budget, the Pettigrew maintenance budget, and 50% of the Irene Hall Museum Resource Center maintenance budget. The county, we're asking for $715,071. That's actually 43% of the total, and that's representing the 50% of the operations budget, the Old Courthouse Museum maintenance budget. Bigger building, costs more to operate, that's the real difference between the city and the county and the half. It's an increase in both requests of $8,129 over fiscal year 2020. And finally, the revenue budget totaling 252,986. That's my real quick overview. I would like to thank the city and the county for 46 years of support of the Suland Heritage Museums. I think it's been a great operation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. So first, I'm going to ask if there's anybody in the audience that has any questions about the budget that was presented. Seeing no one rushing to the podium, then I'm going to ask the joint members here. Are there any questions for Bill today? Commissioner Karski.
Bill, what are your revenues to date based on projections?
Our revenues in... We probably had about $18,000, and this is just real quick off the cuff, in the museum store. Some of those have represented donations in support of a book project that we're nearing the end on. The enterprise fund, we were at about 40 income and 80 expenditure to date, but we did just get some donations that... So I would say probably nearing 50,000 in income in support of the enterprise fund.
Okay, because, yeah, the special enterprise, if I may, the special enterprise fund, you said visitations are down by 50%. Is there a correlation between the number of visitors and those revenues?
Well, there is and there isn't. A lot of our visitation comes from the educational programs, and programming and rentals also generate income. The rentals are not happening. We have, we canceled a great deal of programming, and a lot of the programming activities that we normally do have also been canceled, particularly the larger groups, group operations. We have been doing some limited programming that we started in July, and the programs, for instance, we've been doing our Outside Plaza concerts. We're getting about 50%, and part of it is a change in our operational mode to promote social distancing. We're not selling food anymore, and we're just not getting the crowd, and we don't really want to.
I guess, bottom line, are you going to make your budget projections on revenue? Are you... What's the trend?
Well, for next year?
For this year?
I don't know. I'll be honest. I don't know. There's hope that a number of things this spring, we were rescheduling to the fall. It all depends on if we get through the fall or not. One of our big revenues is we have an endowment at the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation. That tip revenue typically comes in in the fourth quarter of the year, by the time we get it. Our endowment actually has grown through the endowment, and that's a really bright spot. And it's been growing the last three years quite a bit, and that reflects on increased potential revenue, and that may be able to offset some of those other losses.
My question isn't to place blame, but, I mean, you can't help what's going on in the, you know, in the world around us, so I'm just curious as to where you're coming in. So, thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Benega.
I think we closed about the 13th of March, and we reopen June 1st.
Thank you. So what effect did that have on your operational expenses?
It really had no effect on our operation. Our operational expenses continued without having the income that we get in the enterprise fund.
So no utilities reductions, no maintenance reductions?
Well, actually, maintenance costs probably went up as a result of COVID. We didn't hire, we had some savings in part-time labor, and we didn't hire interns and those kinds of things. And we shifted some of the full-time staff schedules around, but we also took advantage of being closed to do some projects, maintenance projects, that we would have had to close anyway and capitalized on the time. We moved up installation of some of the exhibits and tried to work to get those done so when we did reopen, we could maximize the public time in them.
So if I'm understanding you, if you were closed for those 60, some working days probably, the maintenance-related issues that you were dealing with were catch-up kinds of items? Because obviously, if you did one cleaning for, you only had to do it for 60 days.
Oh, we replaced carpet in the first-floor hallway, where we had to basically move everything out of the hallway and tear up the whole place, and that disrupted things for a couple of weeks. We would have ordinarily had to close to do that, so we tried to shift our resources and take advantage of the time when we were closed and get that kind of work done while we were closed so as to not inconvenience the public later.
Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion on the county side.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Motion to approve the museum budget from the city side?
Move approval. Second, Jensen.
Councilor Selberg moves. Jensen seconds. Roll call vote, please.
Council members, Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero.
All right, so that item has passed. That takes us to Agenda Item Two, which is a joint budget hearing on the Suland Libraries. Jody, good afternoon.
Hi, I'm Jody Fick, Director of Suland Libraries, and hopefully every, can I bring them down? Great. Don't want to disturb the mics unless we're allowed to disturb the mics. So, again, Jody Fick, Director of Suland Libraries. Thank you for having me here today to present the 2021 budget request for Suland Libraries. Before I get into the details, I want to begin with a thank you to the finance team, especially to Amber Gibson, Don Tabora, and Sam Stanford, and to the library team members, Monique Christensen, Dan Neves, and Crystal Peterson, for their assistance in putting this together, and especially for their assistance in 2020 as we've made adjustments to this budget year to make it to the end. So, to start. Our story. The mission of Suland Libraries is very user-focused. It is connecting you to a world of ideas and information to enrich your life. COVID has made that a little bit more interesting this year, but I would say that I have the hardest-working staff around, and they persevered and did some very innovative things to make it happen. Suland Libraries was formed 25 years ago this summer. If we wouldn't have had COVID, we would have probably had a little more of a celebration, but just being here is enough of a celebration. It was formed by a joint agreement of the City of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County. We currently operate in 13 branches. Five of them are in Sioux Falls. Eight of them are out in the county. We have a staff of 62 full-time staff and 29 part-time staff. We also have a Bookmobile, which brings the library to children throughout the city and the county. On the graphic, you'll see some highlights of the library in 2019. Our staff conducted 2,754 programs for over 52,000 people, and they did those at all of the locations. Last year, we had nearly 1 million people coming into our buildings. That's a lot of people. That's a lot of spots. Our most visited branch is the downtown library. It's our largest branch, followed closely by Oakview and Prairie West, which those two branches serve a large number of children in the after-school environment. Our meeting and study rooms were used nearly 13,000 times. There is high demand in this community for spaces where people can gather together. Our collection of over 300,000 items was checked out and used over 2.1 million times last year. That includes both the physical and the digital items. And our computer use was used 159,000 times. That is a little bit of a decrease in actual public computer use as people switch to using more of their own devices. Our Wi-Fi use remains pretty steady. I want to talk a little bit about the services that happen. You heard some of the statistics, but I want to talk a little bit about basically what's happened this year in terms of our services. Our collections are divided into both physical, the things that you can check out, the books that you can hold, and the digital. Use of the digital collection is... Well, having a digital collection was very fortuitous for us. We had made an investment at the end of last year to add an audiobook collection of over 35,000 titles that was significantly used by our users, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in the budget presentation. When we closed, we immediately turned on our information help and got our phone calls happening. We had our staff consolidated into a phone team, and they were answering questions. People called throughout. We also answered phones by, things by email and typically in person, but not when we were closed. We also offer services through Bookmobile and Outreach. Outreach includes a delivery program directly to in-home daycares, and that is running again now, too. Printing, copying, scanning, and faxing. Yes, faxing. Faxing is still used. Our printing services were down for a number of months, and then the impact on the user was higher than I would have ever... And then the impact on the user was higher than I would have ever thought. It was one of the first things that after the downtown library opened, that then a staff said, we have to figure out how to get this back and be able to provide it safely. Public computers and Wi-Fi, I've talked about that a little bit already. Gathering space. Public libraries are gathering spaces. In a time of COVID, we are not operating in as a gathering space. It's not safe to bring people together for long lengths of times in close vicinity. So our libraries are still operating in what we called grab and go, but come in, check out, use the collection, but not to stay yet at this point. We'll continue watching how COVID is hitting our community. And when it is safe to do that, we want to invite people back in. And then programming, both in-person and virtual. Before, before March 13th, when we shut down, all of our programming was in-person, well-attended. I shared those numbers with you. Our staff switched over and by the beginning of April, we're already providing online program. One-story time had over 700 views. So very successful. Our community was starred for connecting back to us when we first closed. We're finding right now that that's not quite as much in the numbers. So we're figuring out how to adjust that and get back to what our customers want. A lot of our families have gotten computed out. They're, they're, they're wanting more in-person. So we're figuring out how to do more in-person in an outdoor environment so that it remains safe. And then if you go into any of our libraries, you will see the children's interactive play areas, something we really touted before this happened. They are still shut down, but they will come back. Then I wanted to share this one slide of the actual what COVID did to circulation at the library. The blue line is our circulation from January through July of last year. The orange line is the same period this year. You can see in January and February, circulation was pretty similar. We shut down on March 16th is our first official closed day. Up to that date, we were running actually a little bit of higher. But that shutdown, you can see the immediate drop down to April. At the end of April, we started providing curbside pickup. And you was, you can see on the slide that things started to come back. On June 8th, we opened up the downtown library, followed by the rest of the branches, including the rurals, over the next two weeks. Circu, and, but we were running at only 28% of our hours at that point. Most of our staff, while we were shut down, went, one-third of our staff went and worked in other departments. In addition, our part-time staff was put into an inactive state so that we would have those funds when our incomes and our fine monies weren't coming in, that we would have that throughout the, the year. So in July 13th, we had all of our full-time staff back from the other libraries. So we were able to open up to a 52% level. And then yesterday, we now are open up at an 84% level. Our part-time staff is back. So we can, we can handle all of the services that we did, plus the added cleaning, but not the in-person programming quite yet. Service outcomes. What is our hope for this budget in 2021? I wish we all had a crystal ball so we would know when 20, when the COVID is done. But we are moving forward. Our focus for service outcomes is on the core of what the library is. We are planning to work on increasing the number of active library cardholders. Right before we shut down, we were just ready to start a pilot with the Sioux Falls School District in getting a library card in the hand of every student. If all goes right, we're going to pilot that next, in, in the spring and move forward with that. So we're hoping to increase the number of active cardholders up to 47% next year. Our second service outcome for next year is to increase people's access to the libraries and improve the usability of the website. That number one, one is going to have to go hand in hand with what COVID does for our community. But we also have, in addition to our physical libraries, our digital, digital library, the website. COVID has been an opportunity for us in that we have put a lot of development into that. And by the end of this year, we have a new website coming out on a new framework. So should be easier, more desirable. We already have heightened up the number of resources that are available there. The third thing with the budget is to increase use of both the physical and digital collections as measured by circulation. We learned how to do physical circulation even in COVID. Curbside works. It takes a lot of work. It takes a lot of staff, but we can continue that going. We're back in March and April, we had that all shut down. So no matter what happens, we'll be able to continue that. The budget does ask for additional money for the digital collections so that we can continue increasing that area. And the budget breakdown. This is our operating budget. The major operating budget impacts on the revenue side is an increase in a request from the county of $50,000. The county funds are, come from a property mill levy that was voted on by the county citizens, those outside of Sioux Falls and outside of Dell Rapids back in 1959. They voted to tax themselves for a library. That, that property mill tax can only be used for library. And so that is supported by what is anticipated to come in, in this next year. In professional services, we're requesting an additional $35,000 for digital collections. Use continues to go up. And I have another slide for that, so we won't talk about that anymore, but it's based on demand. In the rental area, we do have an $87,000 increase because of a change in how the city is chart, figuring out how to do replacement on public computers. There is a revolving fund that we put money into. And then from that, all of our computer equipment gets replaced. We actually have not had an increase in that on the library side for the last three years. So we are seeing a little bit more going on in that than we typically would. We also have a $6,000 decrease in our fleet rentals. Fleet rentals covers the maintenance and repair of our courier van and our bookmobile in addition to when our staff use one of the fleet vehicles to travel to conferences and stuff. So that's having a, an alignment down. In repair and maintenance, $25,000 increase for cyclic repair and maintenance. We have some meeting room dividers that need some repair, so that's going to come out of that. Supplies and materials, we're doing a $7,000 decrease for some early learning computers that because this year, those computers are put away, they're going to last a little bit longer, so we don't need to replace them next year. And then utilities, we have a little bit of an increase based on the trends of what's happening with, with utilities. Our capital budget this year is funded by second penny sales tax, 720,000 coming out of the city budget. And then 45,000 coming from the county's requested money, again, from that mill levy. That is all going to books. It is all going to our physical collection. I was going to say, I put a few notes down on how the books are going. For our circulation, to look at my number because I want the number to be correct and not miss, misspeak it. Forty-four percent of the items that are currently checked out were purchased in the last two years. So without more money for books, people don't have the things that they want. So 44% of what's out right now, we just bought in less than two years. I want to draw your attention on this picture to, to the bookmobile. The bookmobile is actually purchased out of this year's capital budget, but it is here and it will go on the road in September. Now, our bookmobile program has changed dramatically with COVID also because it does do a lot of its services to schools. And right now, schools aren't accepting visitors. So we've been doing extra fun things like hydrant parties this summer. We're also doing Levit in Your Neighborhood concerts, ways that we can get connected with the community. So for 2021, the total budget request to operate the library is 8,787,674. Of that, the city's portion is 7.5 and the county's portion is 1.275,000. Thank you. And any questions?
Thank you. I'll first ask if there's anybody in the audience that has any questions about this budget? Seeing none, I'll ask the joint members if anybody has any questions. Yes, Council, Councilor Selberg.
Thank you. 765,000 is up generally about the average spent annually on new books?
It is a little bit lower this year. We pulled back about 50,000 below what our typical is just because we are trying to help balance out the entire budget. I'm comfortable with that because we also don't have circulation numbers running at the same rate yet. I think it's going to take a little bit of time to get back to that level. We're also seeing a little less wear and tear. So those children's titles, that Diary of a Wimpy Kid, the Harry Potters are not wearing out quite as quickly. So we'll be able to manage it with a little bit less.
So tell me a little bit about, how do you decide? You know, you get your budget and you're going to buy new books. How do you decide what books and that type of thing? And then do books age out like you think you just talked about? Maybe some are worn out, but is there also some kind of system where these items aren't getting checked out very often, so we're taking those off the shelves? I mean, is it a combination of that type of thing?
Yeah, we call it weeding.
Okay.
So just like with a garden, you have to take out the stuff that's not needed. You have to harvest the stuff that's past its prime. In a library, you have to weed out the books that are no longer up to date. You know, a lot of reference things, which we actually don't buy as much of anymore because that reference type of collection is now on the internet. That doesn't make sense to print a book if it's going to be out of date in, in a month. So we have a whole team of staff who we call our selectors. They're each trained in a subject area. So we have one person who selects all of our picture books for children. They read reviews. They look at what the uses of our library. They select the best titles for our community. And when they select, they select for our library as a whole. Suland Libraries about six years ago switched to what we call floating collections. So no book is actually owned by a particular library. It is owned by the library that it gets returned to, which means when it gets returned, it's immediately put back on the shelf so it's available for people there. Prior to that, when we would buy, we would buy a copy of every book for every library so that they would all have their unique collection. But with our automated system, people can put their requests on. We have a courier who goes daily and brings the books back and forth. So.
Interesting.
Lots of information. I'd love to have anyone come and see it.
My last question. So then whatever you're pulling off, where do those books go? Is there, like you donate them to other libraries or to have communities?
So most of the children's books get donated to United Way organizations, organizations that are members of United Way within our community. So they'll get shared out to other groups that still want them. Most of our adult books, we send to a vendor called Better World Books. And so they then sell them and they give us a portion of what they make off of them.
Okay, great. Well, thanks for the presentation, all you do.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Yes, Councilor Starr.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jody, your Director, please help me a little bit with school starting and the libraries not being open. We've become such a, a resource for parents with after-school programming that you do. What are we doing with all those kiddos that when they get out of school at 3 o'clock?
Yeah, that is a challenge. Well, the kiddos are welcome to come back in, but it is not a gathering place anymore. So we've been doing a lot of communication with the schools. And we have flyers all ready to go with all of those kids that say, I'm sorry, you can't be here. We just, we just aren't able to do that in a safe way right now. They, we have extended some of our hours so that there's more available for them to come back with their parents and use the collection. And we're also have set up some additional ways for parents to just call and we'll pull items and get them ready for them.
I'm just, when the weather changes, it's going to be a huge impact on families and, and latchkey kids and I'm not sure there is a solution, but at the same time, it's a, a difficult spot that a lot of parents are going to be put in because they count on the, the library to provide that service.
Yep. It, it is something that's at the forefront of our mind. We've also been meeting with the community center folks to, to figure out what we're able to do. School starts this week. I don't anticipate a lot of kids at the schools this week yet. We don't traditionally see them right away, but we will be seeing them and we'll be monitoring them and figuring out how we can make sure that everyone is provided for the best we can.
And thank you. I've, I've preached about Martin Luther King Junior Day and being open and making our city holidays match with the, the school holidays. And you were able to take care of that and, and parks as well. And I need to make sure that I remind myself to, to thank Director Kearney as well. But thank you for that part of it. One other quick question. When I was looking at full-time wages and benefits on page 44, you're staying at the same number of employees, but doing it for $24,000, basically 24.5 less.
We actually have one less employee. We moved in one of our people over to the communications department because she worked actually more with them. She was our, she still is ours, but they're supervising her. So even though the arrow says up, it's really flat. I mean, it's really down.
Or it's really down.
It's down one.
Perfect. I owe Commissioner Karski a dollar then because I didn't think he was right, so.
Yep.
I'll pay up later.
Commissioner Karski has witnesses now, so.
Yeah.
Yes, Councilor Brecky.
You appear to me to be one of the departments that may have found, you know, some things that, that you, that made, that COVID made you take advantage of things. And actually, there's going to be changes in your library system that may bode well in the future. It may have pushed you into a place where you might have not gone. Can you just, I, I, I kind of heard that, but you just, and again, not going to hold you to it, but can you identify, it's just nice to talk about some positives, some things that you see, foresee probably you'll continue to do more aggressively in the future as a result of, of the learning experience from COVID?
Two, two programs that we at this point don't want and curbside pickup materials. You know, that was the one where it's like, oh, people, you can get out of your cars. But it really for, even in a time when we're outside of COVID, for that young mom who has two sleeping children and doesn't want to actually lock her children in her car to come pick up her holds, we'll keep bringing them out. For that elderly person who can drive up, we'll keep bringing it out, no questions asked. So curbside pickup materials will continue. We actually did some software changes that will make that even easier for us. And then the other one is virtual programming. Our staff right now is figuring out how to do WebEx meetings for author talks. So next week, Friday, we have our first WebEx with an author. So figuring out because that allows us to reach people who can't come on our schedule or just simply can't physically make it to whichever library we've decided to have that program at.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Other questions, comments? All right, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion on the county side.
Move approval.
Second. Motion.
Second.
Roll call vote, please. Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender? Aye. Motion passes unanimously on the county side.
I'd look for a motion to approve the library budget from the city side.
Move approval.
Move to approve.
Moved by Selberg, seconded by Kylie. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero.
All right, the item is passed. That takes us to item three, which is a joint budget hearing for Metro Communications. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, councilors and commissioners. We'll take just a second here to bring up our technology. Thank you for this time this evening to present our budget to you for the 2021 calendar year. I would like to also thank the City Finance Office team for reviewing our budget and planning ahead for future years based on our cash reserves. I'd also like to thank the Metro Management Council for their adoption of our budget back on April 22nd of this year. I am Scott McMahon, the Director of Metro Communications. Apologize, I didn't say that right away. We'll move into our next slide here, which I'd like to just introduce you to some information about 911 in the state of South Dakota. Statewide surcharges bring in about $12 million worth of revenue and that's based on $1.25 per line. So each of us that have a cell phone or a landline, you're paying $1.25 tax on that phone. That generates about $8.4 million that comes back to the counties. Of the $12 million, about $8.4 million comes back to the counties in which it was collected from. About $3.6 million goes to the South Dakota 911 Coordination Board and they have, they have been charged with the responsibility of maintaining the phone system, the 911 phone system in this state. So that $3.6 million helps them to set aside funding for future purchases of phone systems. And there's about $938,000 that comes back to what's called incentive PSAPS. There's 11 of those in this state. They're centers that serve three or more counties or 30,000 people or more in their jurisdiction. And we are one of those PSAPS that receives incentive funds. There's about $27.4 million annually that's collected in those 911 expenditures. Excuse me, $27.4 million annually in 911 expenditures. That means that's what we're spending locally at the city and county level as well as the money that's coming into us to maintain our operations and our PSAPS across the state. That means that state surcharges that $12 million are covering about 36% of our operations and the rest is being placed upon us, city and county governments to raise the funds or contribute to the budgets of 911 centers. We have 32 PSAPS or Public Safety Answering Points in our state. I like to just refer to them as 911 centers. Seventeen are county operated and are city operated, one being independent, which is Metro Communications. And then we have four tribal agencies as well in this state. Across the state, there are roughly 327 full-time and part-time communication operators that are those folks that are answering the phone, creating the calls for service and dispatching emergency responders to those emergencies that are occurring in our state. I think it's important to recognize that in this past year, 2019, 332,721 911 calls were answered in this state. That's a portion of the job. The other portion is to answer the 1.4 million calls that come in on our business lines related to anything and everything but a true emergency event. In some cases, even emergency events come in on a business line. A statewide vendor has been selected for the next-gen 911 phone system. As a matter of fact, in January of this year, we did receive an entirely new telephone system at Metro Communications. And again, that is thanks and courtesy to the state of South Dakota for providing that system. Some facts about Metro Communications. Metro serves a population of about 230,000 people here in Sioux Falls and Minnetonka County. We provide dispatch services to law enforcement, fire services, EMS. Total about 22 agencies that we provide a dispatch service to. Annually, we answer more than 328,000 telephone calls and approximately 98,000 of those are 911 calls. And of that 98,000, about 18,000 of those calls are EMS calls where we provide emergency medical instructions to callers and tell a first responder can arrive and seen whether that's police, fire, or ambulance. Metro initiates more than 259,000 calls for service in a year. What that means is a caller calls into us and it's something where we need to send an emergency responder to, we'll create what's called a call for service. And like I say, about 259,000 calls a year that we forward on to our police, fire, and EMS services here in Sioux Falls and Minnetonka County. Currently, we have 40, excuse me, 53 full-time staff members. Forty-seven of those are operators. I like to point out that we're relatively, what I can refer to as flat when it comes to administrative people within our organization. We don't have layers and layers of administrative people. We just have the six. And then like I say, the rest are operators that are on the floor answering your calls for service. Some accomplishments from 2019 and through 2020 so far. We've had a lot of challenging events over the last year or so. Everything from floods to tornadoes to some civil unrest incidents to some social media incidents that have really been taxing for our staff at Metro Communications. It has really spiked up the call volume in some of those cases. And I'm proud of the staff for, you know, keeping up with the operations, providing that public service that they're all committed to doing. Leadership, we've had some accomplishments there. As a matter of fact, we met and we completed what's called a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats in our organization. And then we also created a five-year business plan, which has been forwarded on to various supporters of Metro Communications to review what, where we plan to go in the next five years. What are our projections? What do we want to accomplish? Metro Management and our bargaining unit have had very solid relations with our, between our leadership team and their bargaining unit and everything is going really well with making sure that we have those good relations in our organization. In 2019, we did have the opportunity to, what I'll say, save or not spend almost $50,000 of our anticipated budget, which puts that money back into our cash reserve account. Metro also celebrated its 40th anniversary this year. So for 40 years, we've been operating as Metro Communications Agency. Unfortunately, with the COVID, we haven't been able to celebrate as much as we would have liked to have had and had some tours and so forth. We really have our facilities restricted to maintain the health and safety that we need to maintain and make sure that our operators stay healthy and safe so that we can provide our service. So Metro Communications 2020 budget, $5,171,045. Of that, we received $2,656,866 from the state 911 surcharge. City of Sioux Falls, $1,348,673. Minnetonka County, $449,557. The city of Brandon, we provide what's called the police dispatch services to the city of Brandon. They're covered for 911 through the Minnetonka County, but they have a police department, they need dispatchers or dispatcher officers, so they pay this fee of $85,666. We also have requests for audio recordings and that amount is $11,880. EMS transfer fees, whenever the ambulance service does transfers within the city or out into the county, which ends up being about 170 transfers a month in the city and about another 35 or so into the county, they are currently paying a rate of about $21.80 and that has a 3% increase every year. But it ends up being about $54,000 a year. And then all other revenue. We received some grants and we received some interest earned and we have some recoveries, those types of things that end up being the $32,000 in front of you. So total revenue is about $4,640,277 this year and our use of cash reserve to balance that budget would be $530,768. So you can see in this chart, it gives you a picture of our budgets between 2010, or actually 2008 and going forward. But if you look at, starting at 2010 and going forward to about 2019, you can see that the city and the county contribution was relatively flat, pretty much stayed the same during those years. But you can also look at that red line at the bottom of the chart, starting about 2014, 2015, and that's the use of cash reserves to balance our budget. Because there was no increase in, or slight increase in city and county contributions, we had to dip into those cash reserves. Fortunately, we had cash reserves because there was intent to purchase a phone system, but that phone system ended up being purchased by the state of South Dakota, which gave us cash reserves or gave us the opportunity to use cash reserves rather than coming to you and asking for additional funds between the years of 2010 and 2019. But as you look at 2020 and going forward, you can see that the city and county contribution is increasing. That is because we have to maintain a cash reserve balance and it also applies to last year. For this year, we hired four additional staff and those additional staff are reflected in this budget and the budget increase, so. So this year, and, excuse me, in 2021, our request would be to increase our budget by $73,781, which is equivalent of one full-time employee. But we intend to use those funds to support a temporary staffing mechanism in our organization. If we can look at the next slide, Anna. There's value in temporary staffing. One of the first things is additional staffing is needed. We know we need more staff, but rather than come to you and ask for full-time staff, we prefer to come and ask for funding for temporary staff to help us keep up with our growth. And there's all kinds of benefits of having temporary staff versus just asking for full-time staff. Temporary staffing is a conservative approach to increasing our staffing levels, like I said, without asking for full-time. We currently have four previous operators serving in a temporary status. These folks have served as operator for a number of years. They're fully trained, they're highly capable. For whatever reason it might be, they just can't work in a full-time status anymore. So what we want to do is be able to retain them in a temporary status and continue to use those skills that they've invested in our agency and we've invested into them. So it's an opportunity. It provides current operators with a temporary option and it saves about 26 weeks of training a new person. So if we hire a new person, the first thing we do is spend 26 weeks training them. If we are able to provide temporary staff to one of our staff that need to reduce our hours, it'll save us that training. It gives us some flexibility. We gain about 820 hours above the 2080 hours of an FTE due to benefits. We also gain about another 1,040 hours from that 26 weeks of training that I talked about. And these hours can be spread across all shifts. A full-time person is usually scheduled from this hour to this hour. With temporary staffing, we have the ability to fluctuate or be flexible in their hours where we bring them in. And we, our intent is to bring them in during peak hours of the day where we need them the most. Another thing that we're trying to work on is supervisor time. Temporary staff affords supervisors time off the floor to work on evaluations, to work on various supervisory projects that they have in their job description to perform. And so far this year, as a result of temporary staffing, we've been able to take our supervisors off the floor about 800 hours so that they can, they can do those essential supervisory duties that they have. The management of staff, a temporary staff budget will allow us to schedule temporary staff beyond vacancies. Currently today, we have a temporary staff budget line of $22,000 approximately, but that is used for administrative assistance to our business manager. We don't have any type of a line for floor operations and that's what we're asking for, is the $73,000 to provide us floor operations. Otherwise, currently, we have to, you know, if we're full staff, there's no ability to pay a temporary staff if we're full staff. So there's cost savings. It provides for better control of staffing and the staffing budget. In 2019, these are the numbers for the calls that we answered, 98,000 911 calls. Incoming calls, 164,292. Outbound calls, most often the outbound calls are related to 911 call hangups, which are a big part of our business when it comes to the 911 side. We get a lot of hangup calls and we have to call those people back. We have to try and establish contact so that we can ensure that they're safe. So again, total calls answered in 2019 was 328,585 calls. So growth in service, you can look back as far as back as 2008 and then up to 2019 and you can see that there's about a 35.7% increase in calls for service. And that usually falls along with the population increase, which in this case is a 24.7% increase in population. So as population continues to grow, which it has in this city and this colony, we'll continue to see more calls for service and eventually we'll have to ask for more support for staffing to keep up with that. So now we're on 2021 budget. This is what was adopted by Metro Management Council. So revenue source, state 911 funding will be at $2,656,730. That's actually a $136 decrease from last year just because of the way surcharges are, you know, being brought into the state and being distributed and it ends up being relatively flat on a yearly basis. There's also some reason that years ago, when people had just a landline in their home, but then they switched over to cell phones, we saw those increases from maybe one family having one phone in the house to having four cell phones now for each person in the house. That all happened, you know, back in 2013. So we're not seeing those increases anymore. We're seeing less. City of Sioux Falls, $1,685,841. This is a $337,160 increase. Minnetonka County, $561,946. Again, it's a $112,389 increase over 2020. City of Brandon, $82,500. It's about a $31,660 decrease from 2020. Audio recordings, $13,160, about a $1,280 increase. EMS transfer fees, $57,404, about a $2,690 increase. And then all other revenues is $15,240, which is about a $17,000 increase. Again, that's based on grants, it's based on recoveries, it's based on interest earned, those types of things. So total revenue for 2021 budget would be the $5,072,821 and the use of cash reserve would be the $96,192. You can see there's a drastic difference in the use of cash reserve because of the increase in city and county support. So with that, if there's questions, we thank you for your continued support of Metro Communications. We're proud to be able to serve the public and emergency responders in their roles here in the city of Sioux Falls and Minnetonka County.
All right, thank you. So first, I'll look to see if there's anyone from the audience that has any questions about this budget. Seeing none, I'll look to the joint members. Are there questions from the joint members about this budget? Councilor Sale?
Just one quick question. You talked about your cash reserves. I don't know if I caught a total of what you've got in reserves.
Yes, today approximately $734,000. However, there's some significant payments that need to come out of there yet this year, which will reduce that.
Thank you.
We like to maintain about a 15% cash reserve and that's in discussions with the city finance team. That's what we'd like to see in cash reserves.
You got your question answered? You got your question answered okay any other questions? Alright seeing no further questions I'd entertain a motion on the county side.
Motion to approve the budget.
Motion and a second roll call vote please.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Farth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye motion passes unanimously on the county side.
Thank you again for your support.
Motion to approve the budget from the city side.
Motion to approve Breckie.
Second.
Moved by Breckie seconded by Sale roll call vote please.
Councilmembers Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Breckie.
Yes.
Erickson. Yes. Motion passes eight to zero on the city side.
Thank you.
Thank you this item has passed so that takes us to public input if there's anyone here for public input tonight this is your opportunity. Alright seeing no one coming forward for public input I'd entertain a motion to adjourn on the county side.
So move.
So move Jeff.
So we have a motion and a second roll call vote please.
Karski.
Aye.
Farth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye motion passes unanimously on the county side.
Motion to adjourn from the city side.
Second Jensen.
Moved by Sale seconded by Jensen roll call vote please.
Councilmembers Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Breckie.
Yes.
Good afternoon's work. Motion.
Motion passes thank you.
Yep the meeting is adjourned thank you everyone.